Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We just about got everybody checked in. We're a great crowd here tonight, over 600. So, we have a very efficient and effective meeting here tonight. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome you all here. You may have noticed on the board, we've listed some board and committee vacancies, since most of you have taken the time to do your democratic duty and come out to vote tonight. I would hope that some of you may consider serving on one of our committees. There were several vacancies on several committees, and we would really like to fill them all. And if you've got a couple hours a month that you can give to serve on one of these committees, you would be doing your community a great service. You can certainly go online or go down to the town hall, and they will show you how to apply. I hope you take advantage of it. For introductions on stage, we have the town clerk, Bob Fravor, handling our IT, Al Marshon, the town council, Mr. Bill Ewing. Seated in front to the far left is the finance committee. The school committee is in the middle, and the board of selectmen are here in front at the podium. The town administrator, Mr. Richard Thrawn. And I am the moderator, Ted Adams. We have two microphones located in the aisles for residents to speak. Each committee has a microphone at their table to be used by the chairman for comments and questions. The chair may designate a member of the committee to on-board board to speak when approached. Committee members wishing to speak as individuals should use the two microphones assigned for the residents. When approaching the microphone to speak, the proper procedure is to address the moderator as Mr. Moderator, who will then recognize you. Please respond and step up to the mic, and it will be recognized with your full name and residential address before speaking. All questions or statements are to be addressed to the moderator. The moderator will then request a response from the appropriate party. Please refrain from any cheering or clap, which we would consider to be inappropriate and time-consuming. We want to bring this as efficient as possible. Once the meeting is open, the clerk will read the entire warrant. Should anyone wish to motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant, please do so by addressing the moderator, who will then recognize you and allow your motion. The moderator will then read the article. Please do not make any motion to dispense with the reading of the article. This will allow all of our residents here tonight to understand the full effect of the article being presented. Once an article has been read, the moderator will call for a motion. It is customary for the sponsor of the article to make that motion. Upon the motion, a second must be made to allow any discussion or vote on that article. Anyone may second a motion by simply stating "second." Once a motion has been seconded, the moderator will open the article up for discussion. The presenter of the article will be the first to speak. Once they are finished with their statement, the moderator will ask for any further discussion. Once discussion has been completed, the moderator will call for a vote. The system we use tonight, and I think we just got it under the wire with the number of votes that we have, it will be electronic voting. The system will be by electronic device. All registered voters receive the device when they enter the auditorium. When asked to vote, please do so by entering 1A for "yes" and 2B for "no." Ah, 2B. If you make a mistake voting, you may re-enter the vote by pressing the appropriate number. You may press those buttons all you want, but your device will only record the last choice you made when voting is closed. So right now, we're going to test the electronic voting. You all should have your remotes in hand. We have a test question. Will the Red Sox win the World Series this year? Please vote 1A for "yes" and 2B for "no." Voting is now open. Good point. You should see on your remote a green light. That means your vote has been counted. Is there anybody that does not see a green light when they vote? Awesome. Okay, let's post the results. Ye of little faith. 21% yes, 59% no. It was not the World Series. There's the numbers going to it, they just show it. 261 to 379. Okay, tonight we come together in a group, traditional democracy, to make decisions about our community, to deliberate and advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that our neighbors, whom we may disagree with, are good people with opinions as high as ours. And let us remember that in the end, respect and care for each other in this community is far greater importance than any differences we may have. Before we begin, and because we have such a loud crowd, I just want to point out emergency exits. Obviously, the exits that you came in are accessible from the back of the room and half of the audience, I'm sure. And there are different exits to the left, to the center where you came in, the left where the gym is, and the right. You come out and turn right, you'll also see an exit that way too. There are also emergency exits to my right, right at the end of this aisle. So for those of you in this section or in the front, consider that. There is also an emergency exit in the back of the stage. You use this stairway and go straight to the back of the stage, there's an emergency exit. Y'all clear? Okay, let us begin. It being after 6:30 on this day, June 22nd, 2022, and a core being present, I call a special town meeting to order. At this point, you stand for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is that in the United States of America, in the name of God, in the name of his hands, in the name of the nation, in the name of God, in the name of his children, in the name of his people, for all. The clerk will now read the one. In the name of the town of Massachusetts, we hereby require the... We have a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of the warrant. We're going to do it by the A's in names. All those in favor say "aye."
Aye.
Say "no," it's a vote. At this time, I will need to refuse myself as moderator for action on Article 1. The deputy moderator is unavailable tonight. Therefore, we will need to elect a temporary moderator for tonight's meeting. The town clerk will handle the nominations and the vote.
Motion to nominate Robin Fravor as temporary moderator.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Close the nominations. We'll take a vote on Robin... what's his name? Robin Fravor. 1, yes; 2, no. The poll... poll's not open. Right, the poll's through.
Article 1. Bartlett School Project Appropriation. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the Bartlett School Building Committee for the renovations of Bartlett High School, the project located at 52 Lake Parkway, Webster, Massachusetts, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility in the instruction of schoolchildren of at least 50 years, and for which the town may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA. With the town's acknowledgement that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town. And provided that any grants that the town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 1) 80% of the eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or 2) the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA. This article is sponsored by the Bartlett School Building Committee. The Board of Selectmen recommends approval. The Finance Committee also recommends approval. Approval of this article requires a 2/3 vote. Do I hear a motion on the floor? Ms. Moderator?
Yes. My name is Sheila White, 19th Blueberry Hill, and I am a member of the Bartlett School Building Committee. I would like to make the motion that the town of Webster raise, appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds the amount of $101,417,044 for the purpose of paying costs of renovation of Bartlett High School, located at 52 Lake Parkway, Webster, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto the project, which school facility shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren of at least 50 years, and for which the town of Webster may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended under the direction of the Bartlett School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under NGL Chapter 44 or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore and further that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes are void by this vote, unless any premium applies to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of, sorry, of costs approved by this vote in accordance with GL C44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs. The town of Webster acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need, as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the town of Webster incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Webster, provided further that any grant that town of Webster may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of 1) 80% of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or 2) the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA, provided that any appropriation hereunder shall be subject to and contingent on an affirmative vote of the town to exempt the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitations on taxes imposed by NGL Chapter 59, Section 21C, Proposition 2 1/2. Now the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town of Webster and the MSBA.
Do I hear a second? We have a motion and second to approve the article. We'll now open more discussion.
Madam Moderator. Good evening, folks. My name is Dave Parton, and I am the chair of the School Building Committee. There's a lot of people in the room. Can you guys hear me in the back?
No.
Is that better? There we go. Before we get into our formal presentation, and trust me, we're going to try to keep it brief. I know everybody's probably tired after a long day of work. We do have two of our experts who have been working with us for months here this evening, and they may need to answer some of your questions. So with your permission, Madam Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to allow Kent Kovacs, the lead architect from Klansberg, and John Bates, the lead product manager from Colliers, to possibly speak during the town meeting in case you need them to answer specific questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The school committee, the School Building Committee, has requested that Mr. Kent Kovacs and John Bates be allowed to address the town meeting during the presentation and discussion. We will use the majority vote to approve it. All those in favor, use your remote and press 1A for "yes." All those opposed, press 2B for "no."
O B, please.
M B C O.
Yes, sir. All those opposed, press 2B. Voting is now open. Time for voting has expired. We will post the results. 77% yes, 23% no. It is a vote, they shall be allowed.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Before we get into the presentation, I just want to invite Kelly Siddiqui, chair of the school committee, to come up and say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? How's this? Any better?
No.
Okay, I'll try to yell. So we're here to talk about the future of Bartlett High School. This building was built in 1979, as many of you know. Surfaces very well. It's been maintained very well, thanks to our supportive staff. What we're here to talk about tonight is not whether or not we'll renovate Bartlett High School. The question is how we'll do that. The question before us is whether or not we will accept the grant that's being offered to us from the Massachusetts School Authority. So, I don't want to delay things much further, but I just want to reiterate the full support of the local school committee for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Siddiqui. And again, quick presentation we're going to be giving this evening. Joining me this evening is Dr. McDan Yogan, who is the superintendent of schools, and Mrs. Monique Perangeli, who is the assistant superintendent for business.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to start by thanking you all for coming to this important meeting to share your opinion for a vote. I'm not going to speak long tonight, but there's a couple of things that I do want you to know about this proposed vote. The school district applied six times to the Massachusetts School Building Authority before we were accepted in 2018 to be part of the Massachusetts School Building Grant Funding Program. We have been working with the Massachusetts School Building Association since 2018 to get to where we are here today. In March of 2022, they dedicated $51 to $53 million towards this proposed project. What does that mean for the community of Webster? You will pay less for a renovated building. What does a renovated building mean to the community of Webster? It means updating the educational spaces and programs for the students of this community. Currently, our classroom sizes do not meet state standards, and there are accessibility and other code issues in the building. I'm going to ask Mrs. Perangeli to come up and speak very briefly about the maintenance of the building, and we ask you to share your opinion through your vote tonight.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming. It's wonderful to see so many faces here. And I don't get out much, so I'm going to talk for a really long time. I promise I'll be quick. I have worked here in Webster for 23 years. And out of those 23 years, I have spent them all in the business office. I have worked for the two business managers prior to me, who are both responsible for maintenance of the school district. I can tell you with confidence that we have maintained our buildings. The problems that you're seeing and the problems that you've been hearing are not lack of maintenance. They are equipment that has rotted and has seen its... it's wear and tear over the 40-something years here. There are issues that we cannot address any longer with regular maintenance. The boilers, for instance. I've seen a lot of talk on Facebook about the equipment here in the building and the boilers. This building was run on two very large old boilers. One of them completely died. We could no longer repair it. The second one that we have in place, we have been repairing. We can replace sections and update sections and bypass them. We are to the point where the boiler is so corroded that we can no longer repair the boiler. Is it just as easy to replace a boiler? We did get a new boiler about two years ago. One small boil, which handles about 20% of the load. We need to get five more. And fixing that is not enough to fix all the heating issues that we have in the building. There, in addition to the heating, are piping throughout the building, the plumbing. You ask any plumber that comes here and works here, he will tell you that the pipes are corroded throughout the building. I can tell you about a year and a half ago, we had a leak in one of the hallways. Not a big deal, leaks happen. They happen all the time in buildings. We had the plumber come in, he opened up the ceiling to fix the leak. Once you get in there, the pipes are so rotten and corroded that he was trying to clamp off. So this six-inch fix ended up becoming a five-foot spread of pipe that we could finally clamp off and try and fix. And that's how it is throughout our entire building. We have a wonderful, wonderful team of maintenance staff here at the high school and at all of our buildings, who take a lot of pride in their buildings. They maintain these buildings and take care of their buildings like they do their own home. We meet on a regular basis. They do a lot of the maintenance on their own, replacing filters, belts. We have boilers, inspections, HVAC inspections, fire inspections. We are up to date on all of our maintenance. There are a lot of pictures that you see, you've all seen them. I'm not going to go in, I don't think they need explanation as to what they are. But it really boils down to... Is that a little bit, Carol? A lot of the issues that you're seeing... This building was built and opened in 1979. I don't even think the internet was a thing in 1979. I think that came out in 1983. We have done our best to update the building for technology. We have updated the building, we've included things, but you're sitting in a big brick where the tiling is very outdated. So, I could go on for days about the maintenance in the building. I know on the forefront of things for you is the cost. And what does that mean? And why are we here again? If you look through, and I can't see the left, so I want to slip to mine. I'm going to have you focus on the first column and the last column. The first column is the reimbursement to the MSBA. That is what they are guaranteeing. Part of this process and part of what we've gone through for the MSBA is they require to come in and to look at all options. They don't come in and just say, "Webster, what do you want to do? We picked one and that's it." We hire experts, we hire OPMs, those are the owners' project manager. They actually work for the town of Webster. They're here to protect us, the Webster residents. And then we hire architects, and they're here to study the building. They look at all the conditions, they look at all the areas around, they go through the buildings, and they're required by law to present back to the MSBA all options, not just one option. So we look at new construction. We look at what is it going to take just to upgrade our building to code? Different renovation options. What if we only do a little bit here or there? And what we come up with, and the MSBA approves... If you see in the first column, and I'm only going to focus on the first column right now, the maximum approved reimbursement is about $51 million, which hits the tax rate after Webster Middle School is paid off at $151 a year for a taxpayer. If you go to the last column, the code upgrade, we are required by law to look at a code upgrade. What does a code upgrade mean? That means they come in, they fix all your problems at once in the building. They bring it up to code. All of your ADA is up to compliance. That comes back at $66 million. After the middle school is paid off, you're still paying $205 more. Can you keep going, Carol? Go to the next one? I think they know what that is. So we've been hearing a lot of questions about why are we back here? Why are we here? We're here because the MSBA gives us a timeline. We've been working behind the scenes for, I'd say, two years on this project, and we have what we thought communicated very well to the community. We have been reaching out, we've been within forums, we've been talking to selectmen, we've been talking to others. What we realize is that maybe we weren't getting the word out as soon as, or maybe we didn't explain it well enough. But we are on a time limit with the MSBA. They only give us so many days. It's not like we can go back and say, "You know what, we're going to put this project on hold for another year or two. We're going to change our minds, and then we'll take the money." That's not how it works. We have until June 30th to approve this project or vote "no." Whatever happens, that money goes back to the state and they give it to another district. So it's not like we can continue to come back over and over again. Once we lose this opportunity, we have to start at day one. That means we go back to the very beginning where we were eight years ago, submitting in a new SOI, having to be considered by the state. With that amount of time, we're going to have to address the needs now in the building. And so I think that's what that slide is telling you. It's telling you that clearly, in the MSBA language, states that you have a deadline. You have 120 days, and the idea of getting an extension is not likely to that. This slide up there is a look at... We've been hearing a lot of, "What if we don't do it now? What if we do it over a period of time? What does that look like for Webster?" We do the project now, we get the $51 million in reimbursement. It's going to cost the community about $49 million, and we can proceed. If we break this project down and we do it in chunks, I think it's really important for you to understand that it's not like we can say, "I think the HVAC needs to be fixed first. Let's fix the HVAC because that's our biggest problem." Once you get into a project and once you start hitting a certain threshold, it's about 40% of a project. So once that repair hits the value of your building, that percentage, you're required by law to do the code upgrade. So that immediately is going to kick in all your ADA repairs and all your other repairs. So now that first repair, if you look up there at the presentation, you're going to see that first one in 2023 is $26 million because you have to go back and address all the other needs because of the threshold you hit it. And then if you go out and you say, "We're going to do maybe..." Well, the fire suppression system is code, and that's going to probably have to be updated in the first. But you go out and maybe hit the roof, you're... But you go out and maybe hit the roof, you're talking about a 13.9. You go out in 2031 to hit some more repairs, and then by the time you're done fixing everything that we have in this project right now, you're looking at $106 million done over a 12-year period. Those are real numbers. These were estimates that were done by our architect. Cost estimators looked at these. So within these costs, you have a lot of the same costs over, and repetitive costs over and over again. So I don't think I need to say much more other than that. It's pretty obvious that by doing this project all at once and taking advantage of the money from the state, because if we don't take advantage of it, somebody else will. Our neighboring community right now, Dudley, has just been approved for feasibility, so they're starting where we were about two years ago. There's other people in line. They take, you know, I think when we got approved, there are 17 people out of maybe 170 applications that were submitted. These opportunities do not come every day. And I just feel that, you know, we either pay now or pay later. I know the time is not great, but we can't guarantee what's gonna happen in two years, and it's gonna cost us a lot more money then. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan and Mrs. Perangeli. For those of you that don't know me, I'm actually a very fiscally conservative person. As a matter of fact, many of my kids would call me Chief, and that's okay. Chief's not a bad full letter word anymore. So when I was sitting on the school building committee, I really had no idea what the cost was going to be to renovate this building. I do know from the time I spent on the Park Ave School Building Committee that public projects cost a lot more than private projects. So when the architects and engineers came to us and started to give us estimates of what it was going to cost, honestly, I was shocked. So I'm guessing many of you in the audience, when you first heard these numbers, were shocked. However, the reality is, as Mrs. Perangeli identified, we have a choice in town. We have to, quote-unquote, "repair" this building. Not only have we been told by the professionals that we hired, as well as the architects on the MSBA, but our own code enforcement officials have made it very clear to both the board of selection and the school committee that this building needs to be repaired. What we're hoping to achieve is not only repair the building, but one of the things that the MSBA requires is that whenever you build or renovate a new building, you have to be able to prove to them that that building is going to be sustainable for 40 years to properly educate children. So we went down two paths. And I want to publicly thank not only the members of the school building committee, but also the administration of staff of the school district. As you can imagine, this was not an easy year to work in the field of education. After COVID and trying to reintroduce all the students back into the school environment. But they spent hours and hours and hours in meetings and strategy sessions trying to make sure that the design of the building also matched the educational needs for our students for the next 40 years. We were presented five different options as a school building committee, ranging from a code compliance option, which means basically bringing the existing building up to code, all the way up to a new bill. And each voting member of the school building committee used a matrix and went through every option and ranked components of each option. That information was tabulated so that we were all educated on what we all felt was the best option. And the option that is being presented this evening was not only the best option by the school building committee, but also the MSBA had approved it as well. We all pay taxes. None of us want our taxes to go up. We all put gas in our cars. We understand this is not an easy time for a lot of folks. However, as Mrs. Perangeli indicated, if we don't approve this project by the end of this month, June 30th, we lose the potential $52 million that the state is willing to give to us to assist us. One thing that did surprise, we had a school building committee meeting the Thursday after the last town meeting, and we were getting together to discuss what the next steps were. And all of us on the school building committee were obviously aware of the code issues that are existing in this building currently. But the fire chief and the building inspector were kind enough to meet with us. And they had just done an inspection that day, I believe, in conjunction with the health agents or inspector, I apologize, health agents. And they shared some information with us that honestly surprised me and became much more concerning to me as a taxpayer. So I think it's really important for everybody to hear directly from the source. So if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Ted Tetro, the building inspector, to come up and discuss the concerns that they have specifically about the existing building.
Good afternoon. I know you're all tired. I know you don't want to be here. So I'm gonna count this real short. I'm gonna go right to the point. Unfortunately, with the condition of the building the way it is, no fire suppression. It has gear handles that are all outdated. If you go through the last section where you break it up into periods, it's gonna cost you a ton more. So the question you have to ask yourself and the question that's really at the baseline here is, how much do you want to pay? Because this has gotta be done regardless. And whether I, if I force them to do it, you're only gonna get a code upgrade. You're not gonna get a better school. If the MSBA does it, you're gonna get a better school plus all the code upgrades. So you're gonna figure, do you want to spend $101 million out of your taxes? Or do you want to take the $51 million that the MSBA is gonna give you and lower it down so you only have to pay 48 or 49? It's a simple, simple choice. You give the money away. You can't get it back. So you guys all put the money, you pay taxes. You all put that money in. Take it back, put it into the school, and get something better for your buck. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you for all coming.
Thanks, Ted. So the last thing I want to say, which is probably the best thing I've said all night because I wrote this out of a formal presentation, is I've been asked a couple of times, "Why do you need both town meeting approval and evaluation?" So the approval this evening is to basically spend the money. It's authorizing the $101 million to be spent with the expectation that the town will be reimbursed by the MSBA for roughly $52 million. The ballot question is necessary in order for a debt exclusion to be approved. So in order to take on that level of debt, we obviously need to pay for it. And in order to pay for it, each city in town can only increase their tax levy by 2.5% every year. So the ballot question, which is this coming Monday at the town hall, is to hopefully... Did that change? Sorry, I apologize. I've been away too many meetings lately. Tuesday the 28th, I apologize. So the ballot question next Tuesday is to approve the debt exclusion. So if it does pass this evening, I would encourage everybody to please, on Tuesday, go to the town hall to vote. And once again, on behalf of the school building committee, I want to thank all of you for your time this evening. We hope that this project gets approved. We've been working very, very hard the last 2.5 years. We believe it's the best solution for both the students of Webster as well as the taxpayers. And with that, Madam Chair, we appreciate, I'm sorry, Madam Moderator, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we'll open for questions. We have, as moderator Adalys stated, we have two microphones, one on either side. Before, as we get ready, I'd also like to say that there are still chair seats down here for anyone, especially who has a difficult time standing. Please come down, find your way. I know we have three, there's four, there's five in these rows. So please come down. I'll also ask you to state your name and your address.
Thank you, Nancy Roberts, South Shore Road in Webster. I want to thank the whole board for the work that you've done on this project. Glad it's you and not me. But the question I had was, is, has there ever been any consideration of joining a district? Like, I know in the last meeting, you said that Shepherd Hill is going through the same process and was far behind. And if you have ever considered approaching them or speaking to the school committee on Webster joining their district?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Ma'am. So at our last school building committee meeting, we had two guests, which was really exciting because we never get guests. And they actually asked the same question. And if I give any wrong information or the superintendent wants to provide additional information, please, go ahead. So merging with a school district is very, very complicated. My understanding is both communities, the school committees of both communities would have to approve. Then it has to get approval by DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's also a highly political issue because obviously, a lot of us have a lot of pride about the communities that we live in. So what, if we were able to look at that, what would have to happen is we would have to find another school district to regionalize with. That school district would have to agree, and this school district would have to agree, to regionalize. Then you would have to receive DESI approval. Then you would have to look at, okay, if we're not going to renovate or repair this building, we now need to find a building that's large enough to take on the students that are currently in this building. So as you indicated, Dudley-Chowton is entering the beginning of the feasibility study. I'm not even quite sure if they've actually received appropriation for the feasibility study. I think that's the next step. So they're looking at possibly renovating and/or rebuilding Shepherd Hill. And they're the only school around us who has not renovated or rebuilt a new high school within the last 10 or so years.
And so has anybody spoken to anyone there at the school committee? Has any interest or just to look at it from that perspective?
I don't, again, I'm not on the school committee, ma'am. I don't believe anyone has. Our focus, obviously, for this project was to look at the costs associated with renovating and/or rebuilding this school. I don't want to speak with the school committee, but are you guys aware of any conversations that have taken place?
We've not had any conversations about regionalizing, no?
Would there ever be any interest in taking that one?
That's not really something that we've explored at the moment.
I guess, well, what I see is that, you know, Bartlett is looking to have a more of a hands-on portion to the education system, which we have a wonderful vocational technical school right here in Chowton. And so that, you know, if that is the main portion of the students here, that doesn't leave many students, really, to be incorporated into another school.
So, again, with Bay Path... So currently, the town of Webster has 35 seats open every year for students who attend Bay Path. And we've been obviously part of that regional school district for many, many years. Three of my sons went to Bay Path. They just went through their own renovation project. It's a gorgeous school. They don't have any room for... These become very, very complicated issues because you would have to basically convince not only the school committee of Bay Path to start allowing more of our students in, but also you would have to get the state to approve it. And that building couldn't handle the hundreds of students that are currently in this building. So yes, you're right. Part of the educational plan that the superintendent's team put together is to try to increase that hands-on learning that a lot of our students need. But the vast majority of the students in this building still have a desire and ability and put in the effort to go on to higher education. So the curriculum would not be fully covered just by saying, "Okay, all my kids should just go over to Bay Path."
Thank you. Just another comment about that. The Bartlett High School also has Nichols Honors Academy, lots of other programs that are tailored toward bringing forward our students into higher education. And there's currently about 400 students that are enrolled here. 140 students are opting out of Bartlett, and they're going either to a private school, they're school choicing, or 35 of them are going to Bay Path. Those families, many of them are probably the most invested in their children's education. They're taking active role in ensuring that their students are on the right path. And it's the desire of this committee to ensure that the families that have the investment and commitment in their child's education choose Bartlett as the place to educate their children. And I know there's been a lot of talk about test scores and student performance. And Webster is a very diverse and complicated town, you know? A lot of these kids that live here have a lot of needs, and a lot of the kids that live here have a lot of potential. What we're asking here is to provide an opportunity for every student to excel.
Thank you. I'm here first, and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Chair. Yes.
Okay. Tim Murphy, one corner of the room. I was just wondering, the last time I was here for the meeting, the Park Ave School, they said that the building was unrepairable. Now, we're seeing that this building is to the point of almost unrepairable. So I'm trying to wonder, I asked at the last time at Park Ave meeting, I asked, "Where was the building maintenance? Why wasn't there more inspections done long before it locked to the point? Does the building commission and do the inspection? Or does it outsource everything? Or do they just wait till it's too late and say to the community, "Well, the community are here. It's only gonna cost you $69,000 each for each home." Why is it always going to this point where it's to the point of non-repair? Or an immense figure? In today's market, where are you gonna get materials? We can't even get laundry soap or light soap or, there's many other products we can't get. And you expect to get $100 million worth of materials brought up here in the next year or so? It's not gonna happen. What's the overall cost? What's gonna happen if you overshoot this $101 million project? Here's another, well, we gotta go up on that because we missed the cost by $50 million. Where's the people that were supposed to be at work getting paid $40 a week to do their job? There were that issues like this. This should not happen in 10 years, twice. There should not be a second time. This is a shame. I mean, somebody needs to figure out what's going wrong in this town for people that aren't doing their job.
Okay, so let us have the chairman of the school building committee wish us to address this.
So, sir, I understand your concern. And again, I would respectfully disagree with your assessment that the buildings are not maintained. There's a difference between maintaining a building and a building being 40-plus years that is now out of code that needs significant renovations. The Park Ave project was an entirely different beast. That building was obviously well beyond its usage. And we came up with a wonderful solution that the town supported to build a new building that not only provided the building needs of the community, but also, in my personal opinion, the most important part was to shift the grades around so that it was more appropriate for the social and educational benefits of the children. You did raise a good point because we've been asked many times. We're approving roughly $101 million. What happens when we go up roughly a year from now, it's approved, and the bids come in at $110 million? Legally, we are not allowed to spend a penny more than the dollar amount that is approved this evening. If the bids come in higher than what we hope they will, a couple of things have to happen. First of all, the professionals, the architects and the engineers... Thank you. Value engineering is a big word. I always forget it. They have to value engineer the project, which means they have to go back and relook at the existing scope. At the same time, the school building committee needs to be presented with options to reduce that scope. Once it's revalued engineered, then the bids go back out. So we basically have to get the bids to the point where they do not exceed $101 million. All of these projects have contingencies built into them. There's an inflation factor that was built into this estimate that is approximately 5.8%. Is that the right number? Again, it's changing dramatically. But we cannot spend legally more than the dollar amount that is approved this evening. That is a fact.
Thank you. Chairman Becker, do you still wish to speak?
Thanks, Ms. Moderator. I just wanted to get back to the question that was raised earlier, by the woman earlier, on whether or not there was regionalization. I do remember that there was a regionalization discussion. I remember this by reading in the 1976 Webster Times. One particular citizen said how upset he was that the regionalization with Dudley-Chowton, it would have been Dudley at the time, was voted down. That vote-down of that regionalization resulted in this building here being built. So it has been looked at. It hasn't been looked at since I was probably 12 years old. I just gave my age and it didn't. The other thing is, we've got roughly 1,700 students in the Webster school system. Dudley-Chowton has roughly 3,400. The bigger question is, where on earth... The bigger question is, where on earth would you build new buildings to do a regionalization if you don't use this building and don't renovate it? I hope that answers one of your questions.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi, my name's Nora. I live on Aldrich Street, and my daughter's been here for like one year. So I've a couple of questions about, so $101 million to renovate a 43-year-old building? North High in 2011 cost $5 million, top to bottom. South High, which is Delano, cost $212 million. Why are we spending this much money now to renovate a 43-year-old building? Why aren't we working on a way to figure out how to build a newer building from scratch? That you could up-to-date, top to bottom, brand-new, state-of-the-art Wi-Fi that you all want, brand-new state-of-the-art HVAC versus trying to update and renovate a bunch of old ass buildings? Sorry, pardon my French, French people. It's, it seems kind of stupid, especially in the time of inflation right now, $5 a gallon for gas, like the guy before me said, to sit there and say, oh yeah, $101 million, let's update this, and let's update that, and let's renovate this, and let's renovate that. Why aren't you looking at a way to build a new building? And is this $101 million, how much of it is actual inflated cost? Because I saw that there's like, in the past six years, you've been trying to figure out a way to get the Massachusetts, the MSBA to approve this. How much was the cost then versus now? And how much would it have saved us then?
Okay, thank you.
To answer your first question, as I think I mentioned earlier, we looked at five options, ranging from a code upgrade of this building to a new construction. The reason why the school building committee chose what I would say a middle ground is that a new construction was roughly $125 to $130 million before you got the MSBA reimbursement. So it would have cost much more to build a new. In addition, this building, because it's been so well-maintained over the years, based on the experts' assessments...
Please.
Because, the building, we're able to renovate a significant portion of this building because it has been maintained to the level it has. If it wasn't maintained as well as it has, we would be forced to go to a new building route. To answer your question, there were like four questions in there, and I apologize if I skip any of them. To answer your question as far as what the inflation was from 2013, which was the first year we requested approval from the MSBA, I honestly, ma'am, have no idea. However, we could not begin this process and ultimately try to get state fundings to help support the project until we were accepted into the project. So we didn't sit back and say, we want to wait 10 years before we move forward. We had to wait until the MSBA approved our statement of interest finally in 2019 in order to move forward with this process. Does that answer all of your questions?
But why don't you make the MSBA pay the inflation rate difference?
Well, unfortunately, ma'am, that's not how it works. They are paying an inflation rate difference because they're paying roughly 51% of the project.
But they're actually not, because if you look at the employee, like how much, say how much wood cost in 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19 versus now? The inflation rates are asinine. So no, they're not paying the difference. And the fact that they want to put that on the taxpayers? I mean, I don't know how many people here have kids that are going to be in high school. My kid's not. My kid graduated from Bay Path, he didn't go to this school, 207th grade, and even then it was falling apart. Doesn't matter. I don't understand why, with inflation rates the way they are now, I, as a taxpaying citizen, on top of the water sewer system, I have to pay for that, it's disgusting. The brown water I'm stuck with, a high tax rate, paying to go to work with $5 a gallon gas, trying to find food for my family, I now have to pay this Towne Webster to renovate a 43-year-old building when you just admitted for, what, 20, 24, 25 million more, you could have just built a brand-new building from scratch? How many people here would prefer to have a brand-new?
Uh, excuse me? Please address your comments to the podium here. If you have another question? Excuse me?
How many people on the podium would prefer to have a brand-new building that would last another 50, 60 years with the upgrades you wanted to do versus spending $101 million on renovating a 43-year-old building?
Thank you. That's what we'll find out tonight. The next person, please.
The Trump said, oh really? The issues with the windows, everyone's talking about, the roof and the HVAC, go back 20 years. I graduated from here, there were issues back then. Where were the articles in the town meeting back then for new windows, a new roof, new HVAC? Other departments are dating something like fire. They put articles for a new truck. Police put articles for equipment. So does the DPW. Where are the articles to upgrade this school for what it needs? This school has been erected, and we're going to put money into this school. When we leave here, look at the middle school. It has an asphalt shoe-in roof on that building. That's going to need a new roof while we're still paying the renovations to this school. Where does it end? We don't have the money to foot bills like this. Wait two years, let the economy come down. Let the economy get down. This is absolute fault. No one else. I mean, why do we have to do so much to this school for equipment done over time?
Okay, let's have the chairman answer if that question.
So again, sir, I, trust me, I go to the gas station every other day, I'm on the road a lot, I understand. This is, this is not the ideal time. When we submitted the SOI to the MSBA in 2019 and received the fact that we were awarded into the program, none of us could have imagined, I was stated concerns about 20 years ago and what was, et cetera. But when we started this school building committee process in 2019, none of us knew that COVID was going to hit, none of us knew that there were going to be $5 a gallon gas prices. The problem we're facing, sir, from my perspective as a taxpayer, is if we don't approve this project, the MSBA reimbursement expires in a couple weeks on June 30. We've already been told by the local code enforcement officials that we need to repair this building. So from my perspective, it's a relatively simple question to answer. We either spend $66 to $106 million, depending on when we do those repairs, over the next three to 10 years, or we entered, we approved the MSBA project as it exists today, spent $49 million, which is still an incredible amount of money, and received $52 million of state funding, which by the way, if we don't accept the funding, that $52 million is going to another community in a heartbeat. There are dozens and dozens and dozens of cities and towns every year applying to the MSBA to have their buildings renovated or built. So that's our tax dollars as residents of Massachusetts. That money is going to be spent at another community, and we're still going to have to be, now, I would never speak, I'm not a member of the school committee, I would never speak for them. But my guess is if this is not approved, based on the information that the town has received from the code enforcement officials, in the very near future, you're going to see articles presented at a town meeting that start to repair this building. And what I've been told by the engineers and architects, once you start working on this building, then you have to bring everything up to code within a certain amount of time.
And why would these windows be replaced 20 years ago? Directly to the town. Why would these windows be replaced 20 years ago?
I can't address that, sir, I wasn't even prepared. But I don't know if they all deserve money for that.
Okay, thank you, sir. The lady here?
Moderator, could you take a show of hands of how many people understand that this meeting is about us claiming over $51 million of free money from the state in order to help us with a $100 million project to improve our children's lives?
Everyone is coming in, everyone has come here, one person has a vote, and we will find that out at the end of the discussion.
Very well, thank you.
I understand, especially if you're in the back, you might like to have this vote go much more quickly. But due to all of the people who have taken the time out of their lives to come here and ask questions, I'm going to continue and not move forward with that request. I will ask speakers to, if you have something to offer or a question that's new and not been said already, I would like you to keep your comments succinct, because we do have a lot of people here. So we'll go over to this side now. Please state your name and where you're from.
Hi, Michael Gorman, I live on Ronnie Drive. Simple question, I'm a taxpayer. What's the cheapest option here, estimate, estimated cheapest option?
So the cheapest option from my perspective is what's being presented this evening, which is $49 million to the town, including the $52 million of MSBA reimbursement, as opposed to having to spend $60 million either now or over the next 10 years to fix this building where we get no reimbursement from the state. That's all on us.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. The lady here?
Good evening. John Paul, 132.3 S Road. I would like to address the elephant in the room, the surtax that will be placed on every one of us homeowners. Because if you're telling us that we have to pay $164, $164.90 for every $100,000 of evaluation for the next 30 years, I want to make sure that that's still in place. Is that what you're saying to us?
Yes, ma'am.
And if that is the case, then I want to know, who, what, how is that going to be placed on our tax bill? Because I don't see any consideration being given for the elderly of this community. We built this school, we built the middle school, we built the elementary school, and now you're asking us again to come back to this school? Did you ever think of exempting 75-year-old people? Well, we didn't go to that. Please. My other question is, when it goes on the tax bill, it dispasses. When are you going to tell us what that assessment is going to be? Now or when the project is finished?
Mr. Chair?
First of all, ma'am, I apologize, I'm not an accountant, I'm not the town accountant. The town administrator was invited to join us this evening. Your question about exempting folks over 75 from an increase in taxes, personally, I would not have an issue with that, and I would be more than willing to pay my share to do that. However, I'm not even sure if that's legal. I don't know what the state or local laws are. Secondly, I apologize, ma'am, I'm going to drop you second question.
My other question is, how are you going to put this on the tax bill? Is it going to be part, because you're still asking us to pay the increase in taxes yearly? So is this going to be put separately as a surtax? So for those people who can pay their regular taxes but not the surtax, are they going to be penalized with a lien on their property?
I'll let the town administrator answer the last part of your question, ma'am. What I do want to say is, again, I understand this is a burden for all of us. This is not the ideal time for any of us to be adding money to our tax bills. I feel very sorry for those folks that are on a fixed income, and I'm sure it's very scary when you look at the cost of groceries going up, heating oil every few months, et cetera. From a town standpoint, from my perspective as chair of the school building committee, I'm representing the votes that the school building committee has taken, this is the most fiscally responsible option in order to get this building to where we need it, both from a physical standpoint as well as an academic standpoint. The, I believe, and again, the town administrator can correct me if I'm wrong, the increase to your taxes will not occur immediately. It's not going to include, they won't, they ain't the town, sorry. The town will not start borrowing to pay off the town portion's share of your debt, I've been told, for two to three years from now. Is that a fair assessment, this town administrator? So hopefully, none of us have trisphalts. Two or three years ago, none of us knew that COVID was going to hit and inflation was going to be through the roof. Hopefully, if you listen to most of the economists that I listen to, they believe that inflation will come down in the next 12, it began to come down in the next 12 to 18 months. Hopefully, by the time this increase hits our quarterly tax bills, inflation will come down somewhat. But just the town administrator, do you want to address the question of surtax?
Yes.
How are you?
Very good, how are you?
I'm very good, thank you.
We've had nice discussions about this.
We certainly have.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
The, what you refer to as a surtax is really, it's a temporary tax increase in the life of the bond. This is probably going to be a 30-year bond, and so it will be on your tax bill, it will not be part of your full amount, it'll be separate on your tax bill. But it is part of your tax bill, it's not a surcharge. So to your question, if, you know, people are required to pay their taxes, if people do not pay their taxes, then the tax collector goes through a process that ultimately would end in a process where you would end up not just with a lien, but potentially a tax statement, you know, that's extremely rare. But, but in effect, you are required to pay this tax increase as you would any other part of your tax bill. So I know you call it a surcharge, I think we're talking about the same thing, just a little different language.
My last part of that is, what, what basically, um, when, when do you intend to make that assessment of what is going to be charged and when? And my last question also is, how do we pay for the elementary school and how do we pay for the middle school if we didn't have to go beyond proposition two and a half?
It's my belief that you did actually, you did vote down exclusions for both projects. So this is similar to the two projects that have been approved.
Okay. And my last question is, when is this going to happen? Is it going to, are we going to be assessed now or after, like in three years?
It would be probably two, more likely, three years. What happens is, is if this is approved, then the town has to go through the process of engaging engineers, the job has to be fully designed, it has to be ultimately approved, it has to be bid, and bids have to be awarded, then they have to be contracting. So it's, this takes a long time. It's probably a good nine months before we even get through, even into the design process. So you're probably talking about, this building isn't going to be built for at least two years. And generally, what happens is, once, once the building is completed, that's when a town would do the bonding for the full amount of the funding that's been approved. So for instance, in this first year or second year, the town is short-term bond, just to pay for the interest and other project costs, but the full amount wouldn't be bonded until the project is essentially completely done. So that would probably be two to three years before there would be any significant increase in people's taxes.
Thank you. I thank you very much for your time.
And it's a pleasure to see you again.
It's a pleasure to see you.
I'm moderator.
Ma'am?
I'm Stephen Grover, at Eaton Maltham Drive. I want to thank school committee, school building committee, FinCom, Selectman, administration for the work you put in to try to come with a possible project. I am against this design and this thought. I implore a new school, because a new school would have given us maybe 80% reimbursement, which would mean we would be paying 25 to 30 million, not 49 million. That's number one. Number two, the $66 million, if we vote this down to get upgrades, that would be, I assume, without going back to the MSBA and asking for an accelerated fund or the accelerated grant. That's a shame that we're not putting that out on the board, because that is an available thing for roofs, windows, and heating systems. So that is possible, and that would cost us immense amount less. But we need to do something with this building today. We can't wait two years when the project starts. The roof needs it today. The kids deserve a roof that doesn't leak. The kids deserve a heating system that works reasonably well. Why can't we now start?
It may be in another one of these bloody meetings, but start with taking some of the surplus funds or any other funds the town can find to at least start getting some of the repairs done. And I would not be opposed to somebody coming up with a way to put a small bond out there for a few million dollars to get these projects done today, not in two, three, four, five years. The kids need it, they deserve it. And I, I don't know why we're going in the process we're going in. We could save so much money with a new school. We could save so much money with doing things differently, being open-minded and coming up with better ideas. I get we're trying new things. I really believe we could try a few more things than a few residents here who are for or against or vocal or whatever they want to do could sit down and come up with a financial way of doing this. And I'm sure the finance committee, if given more possibilities from many different people, could come up with. I'm married to a grant accountant. She knows her accounting, she knows her grants. I've got a lot of information from her. We have researched and got over 400 pages of information. There are many other schools who have done this. Lowell has done seven schools, seven schools with an accelerated grant from the MSBA for less than $20 million. Their high school, they've gone $38 million over budget. Two other high schools, and I can't remember the names all of a sudden, have gone over budget. The MSBA put out last week or the week before that most projects are coming in 20% over budget. And lastly, the bond is not going to cost us the same as in 2013, as it will in three years from now. We all know the interest rates are climbing. It's going to cost us more. We need to look at that. And why aren't we cutting? Because we're saying we can't spend $100 million? Why aren't we cutting those items today from this $49 million? Like the fields? That could save us $5 or $6 million, $10 million? I don't know what it is. But if that brought us down to $40 million, it'd only be $120 per person for tax, per $100,000. We could save money there. I mean, I'd love to hear some responses.
Mr. Chair?
So sir, the only thing I do want to address, and I'll ask for others, because I'm, they're better at some of these edges than I am, with regards to the fifth option that was provided to us, which is new construction. First of all, the estimated cost of that new construction ranged roughly from $125 to $130 million. We were told by the experts who did the estimating for all of these options, and just so you know, the actual MSBA reimbursement percentage that was given to us was extremely close to the estimates they gave us. We were not going to get an 80% reimbursement rate, a net 80% reimbursement rate for new construction. It was going to be roughly about the 51% to 53% reimbursement, net reimbursement rate that we got with option three. One of the reasons that I've been told is obviously the state does not have unlimited funds. And usually, it's the high school projects that end up being the most expensive. So they will cap the maximum that they're going to award to any one project so that they don't spend all their money on one individual project. So if we chose that option to build new, it was going to town, cost the town a lot more than the $49 million that is being presented this evening. As far as the accelerated repair program, years ago, when this information was presented to the school committee, the school committee had to make a choice. Do we do accelerated repairs by just taking a few of the items in the building and repairing those at that time? Or do we do a more holistic approach? Try to enter the main MSBA project and address not only the physical needs of the building, but also address the educational needs for our students for the next 40 years? And we chose the latter. Now, if this fails, what the school committee and the board of selectmen choose to do as far as moving forward, again, we've been told by the code enforcement officials, we need to repair this building now. I do know that applying for the accelerated repair process is very similar as the general program in that it could take several years to be accepted. So I think that answered part of your question?
No, but that's not true on that part. It's two to three years to do accelerated. We've already checked into that. That is the average. How did the other high schools, out of the three high schools that are right now getting the grants? Got 73 was the lowest percent and the highest was 78%. That is available to new school buildings. I don't know where you get 50% when we have checked over 30 schools, all high schools, that got way more than that.
So the architect is just, again, if you just say this option is 5%, we're going to do that?
Yes.
I just looked at the Telegram Gazette. September 7th, 2020. Doherty High School. $266 million brand-new cost. $135 million MSBA. That's 51%. They face the same issues we faced in reading the article. A number of things are not reimbursable under the MSBA. So I just want to deal in facts, that's all. $135 million against a $266 million cost. That's a 51% reimbursement. September 7th, 2020.
Thank you. Hi Ken.
All right, thank you. Thank you, because I remember you from the community forums and we had a good conversation. So it's, it's not a fact that you will get more reimbursement for new construction. Actually, the MSBA gave 5% more reimbursement for renovation. That's a fact. So they give incentive points for renovation. And when they review this project, now, what's unique about this is, this isn't a 1950 school where you're bulldozing. It has no, 1950s, 1940s schools were built really quickly and new construction is viable. That's most of the new construction projects you see with the MSBA. In fact, this vintage, this 1979, 1970, you know, '80 school, you're going to see a lot of this. And when this was evaluated, it has incredible bones and was able to be reconfigured. Now, this plan for renovation, which got you an additional 5% reimbursement, met the educational vision of the district and satisfied the MSBA. And Deborah Goldberg, our state treasurer, commended this town, this community, on this renovation option. So much that this was promoted with the inspector general's office in the MSBA saying, hey, people are wasting their money on new construction. Hey, there's a field over there, let's do new construction. You're going to have to bulldoze your house and build a new one? This school committee answered questions that, how can we be resourceful? Does this building have life? So Deborah Goldberg, the MSBA board, all evaluated the options, co-complying. They will not reimburse for just upgrades to code because it does not meet state educational standards. Everybody realizes that, right? You can come back in a couple of years and renovate the boiler, which then triggered the fire protection system. It's not $2 million, it's more like $8 million. You can come back a little after that, do the roof and the windows. You can come back after that and do the electrical, telecommunications. This building has been repaired. When we talk about these systems, these are major capital projects, not repairs. A broken windows repair, a pipe burst repair, a 100,000-square-foot roof, removing it is a capital project. 120 windows on the penetration of this building is a capital project. Electrical conduit running down the walls, that's not right. That's a capital project. So I just want to be clear that this option we're speaking about, that expires June 30th, with the grant money that the MSBA has given you, that meets the educational value and state standards for the children, that's what we're talking about. The rest of it is, is information that's been shared with the community for about a year and a half.
Okay, we'll come here now. Thank you.
Hi, I am Mary Teresa Dionne from Wall Street. Um, so... This is really hard to talk, oh my God. I'm sorry.
At least you're in the dark, drive me into the light.
Okay, so the house that I bought in town 20 years ago was built in 1860. We got an old house. Once you start to make a repair, I wanted insulation in my house. I couldn't get it. And the reason why is I had not been to wiring. If you want the insulation, you have to do the upgrade. And once you do one upgrade and the guy comes in and inspects your house, he catches them all. It's just the way it is. Okay? So my water heater broke. You know, I could fix it or I could replace it. It gets so many years old, I'm going to replace it. You know, it only has a shelf life of 10 years and that's just the way it is. So I, my husband is somebody who does repairs. He goes into banks, he goes into different locations. You know, they pay him to do stuff and if the ceiling tile is all wet, he is not allowed to replace it. Would you like to revive? Because if you don't fix the roof in a week, he's wasting money fixing and replacing that tile.
Thank you.
So, Danny, have this.
Do you have a question?
I actually do.
You're doing fine.
This is really, it's a big project. It's hard to wrap your mind around it. My kids were lucky to, and did not actually, they got to go to, they have, you know, play. There's only so many kids that can go there. The rest of them still need to have a great education that fits their needs. So my question is about the building code violations. He spoke of the fact that the, after the last vote and that the gentleman came in and was shocked by something. I'd like to know what those were.
Okay, thank you.
So just to make it clear, I, personally, I knew all along that we had code issues in this building. That's why I've spent with many others the last two and a half years trying to come up with the best solution to repair them. And again, I'm just speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for the other members of the school building committee. What surprised me, because honestly, I have not had any good individual conversations with the fire chief, the building director, or the health agent. What concerned me was the tone of the message and the fact that these aren't just things that we need to do, these are things that need to happen now. So that's, that's, that's what I guess I was trying to relay and I apologize if I didn't. So it was just my personal hearing it as well as the tone as far as the urgency that the code issues had to be addressed immediately.
From what you had said, I had gotten the impression that it was worse than you thought.
No.
That's something you had come up.
I've sat through many, many really boring meetings with our wonderful architects and engineers, both of us guys. Yeah. They, you know, obviously, part of our feasibility study is they tear this building apart and they've identified all of the issues. So I was very, very well aware of what needs to be repaired and kept me to a point, rebuilt. This is just, this is a significant rebuild to this building to make it more educationally sound for the next 30 years. My response to was the comments that were made as far as the urgency that the building needed to be addressed from a code standpoint, from a local code enforcement standpoint.
So my other clarification, as you're saying, there seems to be some concern from our side tonight about the inflation of the whole thing. And it seems to be suggested by some of our town people that this budget happened in 2013. When did this budget, when did we arrive at this budget? Was it after the 2019 vote?
That's a great question, because I forgot to mention that. I would have got yelled at afterwards, if I ever remember. So the architect firm and the engineering firm both used their own estimators throughout this entire process. The estimates for this project are based on construction, public construction figures of January of this year. So the last estimate that was done was in January of this year. And again, an inflation factor of roughly 5.8% was built into those numbers. So again, if the bids come in over $101 million, we are required by state and local laws not to spend more than that dollar amount. So we have to value-engineer the project, potentially reduce the scope, resubmit the request for bids and get, so we cannot spend more than $101 million.
Thank you.
Linda Littleton, 24, South Point, Maryland. I commend you for all the work that you've done. I've been on two school building committees in other towns and it is not an easy task. Asking people to spend money is also not an easy task. And we're all strapped, we understand that. I can remember in 1986 when I paid 18% interest on my first house and gasoline eight years ago was $5 a gallon. So things do change up and down. And I don't think that should be the front of making our decision today. I do think that Massachusetts MSBA is giving us a very fair accommodation that I would rather be taxed on $50 or $40 or $49 million than $60 to $70 million that is not a new building just repaired. The building plan for this is a rebuild as well as a renovation. So there will be new grants and new progress made. The thing that I just can't get over being a retired school teacher is why we do not feel like this is an investment in the future. We are talking about the life of kids for the next 30 years. Not so many kids now who have or haven't gone to school. Most of us that are here in town meeting and have been in all the other meetings don't have children in school anymore. But we know the value of a good education. Plus Webster has had 170 kids leave this school system. You have to ask yourself, why? If you have a new building, new programs, and you can upgrade your community through your schools, there's no better choice for raising your taxes. I would ask to move the question to vote.
So, part of procedures are, you do not get to speak and then move the question. So that would, that request would be out of order.
Move the question. There we go.
We have a motion and second. This will require a two-thirds vote. If you can get the voting ready, please. So those in favor, press 1A of moving the question. Let me explain what moving the question means. It means that there's an, the motion has been made and seconded to move the question. Moving the question, you're going to be asked to vote and this will be a two-thirds vote. The question, if it passes, will mean that all discussion stops. If people would like to continue with the discussion, then if it loses, we will continue discussion. If it wins and we stop the discussion, we will go straight to the vote.
Madam Moderator?
All right, I have just been informed, I have just been informed that we do not have a slide for this motion. So it will have to be a votes, voice vote. If I cannot tell, excuse me. If I cannot tell, then we will do a standing vote, and we will count.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Folks, just to clarify, because this gets confusing sometimes, this vote is not on the vote for the school project. This vote is to stop discussion and take the vote on the school project.
Okay. So all those in favor of moving the question, ending the discussion now, please say aye. All those in favor of opposed to moving the question, say nay. I think we're ready to move the question. That was unanimous. There being no more discussion in moving the questions, we are ready to vote on the motion to approve Article One as presented. All those in favor? Do you have a... Okay, thank you. All those in favor, press one A. All those opposed, press two B. And the voting is now open. I will remind you that it does require a two-thirds vote. Time for voting has closed. And please stop. Let us please hold. We have forty... Four-hundred-and-seventy-three... I can't see that far. Four-hundred-and-seventy-three to a hundred-and-eighty-four. That is a two-thirds vote. The motion has passed.
We have a motion and a second to dissolve the meeting. All those in favor, say aye. The ladies have it. The meeting is dissolved any day. Please turn in your clickers on the way out. They will not open your garage door.